We're going to go ahead and get started. Amherst Media, are you ready? So, welcome to the Wednesday, March 21st, 2018, meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. So, the first order of business is approval of the minutes from the, well...
In your little side packet, you have minutes from January 17th and February 21st, and they were emailed to you yesterday and today.
Okay. So, January 17th is the first one, so I will admit confusion because I opened the meeting at 7:02, but I was absent, so...[41.12][41.12](laughter) So, with that correction, would have been Mr. Stutzman, who opened the meeting? Any other corrections?
I'll move to approve the minutes of January 17th.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, raise your hand against abstentions. And now we'll go to February 21st. And is there a motion to approve that one?
So moved.
Mr. Stutzman. Ms. Gray-Mullen. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand against abstentions. And I...
Yes, you have a statement.
And I will introduce, and I'm so sorry, it feels like you've always been here.[115.31][115.31](laughter) And...
11:15 or 11:00? First one. Steve.
Okay. I'd like to introduce the newest member of the planning board, so we're back to full staff, David Levenstein, who is, as I understand, has been a lawyer, an attorney, and lives...
Still?
You're still our attorney, okay. And lives in the downtown area, but we're really glad to have you on board, so welcome.
Thank you.
So, let's see, moving on the agenda. We're almost on schedule. So, we are going to do a couple of public hearings for zoning amendments. So, first I need to read a preamble. "In accordance with the provisions of Sections 5 and 11 of Chapter 40A, these public hearings have been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and abutting towns. These hearings are being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw. These amendments will be on the warrant for the annual town meeting." The first one we're going to hear is A-08-18, "Zoning Demolition Delay Historical Commission", to see if the town will amend Article 13, "Demolition Delay", for structures of historical or architectural significance of the zoning bylaw by deleting Article 13 in its entirety and replacing it with a new article, "Demolition Delay", for structures of historical or architectural significance to clarify which projects are required to be reviewed by the historical commission and to clarify applicability, public hearing, and other procedures. So, the way the process will work for this and the next one, we'll begin with a report from the proponent petitioner, or the zoning committee, if the board is the group sponsoring it. Then we'll take questions and comments first from the board, and then we'll open up the hearing to members of the public. All speakers have to ask to be recognized by the chair and should identify yourselves by your name and your street address, and then all questions and comments should be directed to the chair. Then after testimony and discussion have been completed, the board must either continue the hearing to a date certain or move to close the hearing. The board may then vote on its recommendation. So, with that, we'll start with the proponent petitioner.
I'm the current chair of the historical commission, and I wanted to, all of us wanted to bring this to your attention, and just, I would just like to say a little bit about the historical commission's reasoning and our intentions in proposing a revision of this bylaw. So, we're recommending a revision of Article 13 with revisions that are intended to correct what we consider defects in the language and the application of the bylaw to the process for determining what constitutes a significant alteration and a significant structure to better serve all those affected by the bylaw. So, first, something rather general that you can read in the bylaw itself, the existing bylaw, that "The public policy goal of the demolition delay bylaw rests on the idea that the economic, cultural, and aesthetic standing of the town of Amherst can be best maintained and enhanced by due regard for its historical and architectural heritage and by striving to discourage the destruction of such cultural assets. And in pursuit of that goal, the historical commission is made, under state law, responsible for the protection, enhancement, perpetuation, and use of our town's historically and architecturally significant structures. Protection of our historic assets is, in our town's bylaw, considered a public necessity and is required in the interest of the prosperity, civic pride, and general welfare of the people." And then, of course, there are a number of purposes enumerated in the bylaw that sort of range from protecting and enhancing structures to fostering civic pride, to enhancing the town as a destination for tourists and visitors, and then on through a number of others, but also providing owners of significant structures with the time to consider alternatives to demolition. So, in considering a revision of Article 13, the historical commission wanted to solve some problems and worked with a number of parties that have been affected, perhaps negatively affected, by the current bylaw to come up with some mutually beneficial solutions. So, what we've observed in recent years are three basic problems, that the prevailing practices of building commissioner and review, and then referral to the historic commission, do not match the practices and procedures outlined in the bylaw. Second, there have been many, too many, inconsequential demolition permit reviews that have made their way to the historical commission. So, this has caused frustration for the applicants, but we also feel that it dilutes the purpose and the application of the bylaw regarding serious historic preservation issues and has placed a needless obstruction in the way of homeowners and others in the timely execution, permitting, and execution of their own renovation projects. And then, third, there is, has been a little bit of lack of clarity about what kinds of properties should be subject to a demolition permit review. I think it's important to note that, you know, the historical commission very rarely imposes a delay on demolition or on changes to a structure. In the last several years, there have been dozens and dozens of demolition permit requests, and in the last, oh, I think it's four years, there have been 10 public hearings on these demolition permit requests, and only three delays imposed. So, it's a rare thing that a delay is imposed, and we think that tightening up definitions and procedures can alleviate the number of needless permit reviews and also be able to energize and focus the work of the historical commission in other areas. So, I'll just give a few examples of what we're trying to accomplish, and this won't be exhaustive because you have the text of the revised bylaw in front of you. One is to create more sensible definitions. You know, on the lighter side is the definition of a structure in the current bylaw. Right now, it reads that "Any edifice, object, or building of any kind that is constructed or erected and requires more or less permanent location on the ground or attachment to an object with permanent location on the ground, not including wheels." And we, you know, we want to get rid of the training wheels because that just doesn't seem to be an issue in the town, and there is no other definition of structure that we can find in other demolition bylaws that refer to that. I think that phrase is still in the version you have, but it's one that we want to remove. A more important improvement is adding a definition for significant alteration. So, obviously, significance is in the eye of the beholder, so the proposed revision is intended to assist the building commissioner in what he does with building permit applications by offering some concrete guidance. So, the addition for significant alteration is "Alteration or removal without replacement of more than 25% of the total incorporated area of a building's exterior envelope", et cetera. Now, this kind of percentage-based definition is common in other demolition bylaws around the Commonwealth, and we think that its specificity and the concreteness can remove some of the ambiguity of relying simply on the term "significance" without further extrapolation. So, parenthetically, just another word about significance. The bylaw sets out certain standards for determining historic, architectural, or geographic significance. So, these are the, you know, the main criteria by which the commission itself determines whether a structure is significant, not whether the alterations are significant, but whether the subject of the permit request is significant. And these standards aren't unique to Amherst. They are recommended by the state historical commission and used by nearly all towns and cities in the state with demolition delay bylaws and by municipalities around the country. So, the historical commission doesn't want to use different standards from everyone else, but rather wants to make them more easily understood and more efficiently applied. Okay. So, a second type of goal is to bring the bylaw into line with its practical application. For example, the letter of the current bylaw would require that all demolition permit applications involving a significant structure should come before the historical commission. So, these applications go to the building commissioner. Would they all come to the historical commission? Well, if it's a significant structure, they would. And how is a structure's significance determined? By historical commission review. So, it's a little bit of a circular process and is, according to the letter of the bylaw, not necessarily practically workable. So, the proposed bylaw enables the building commissioner to make the building permitting process smoother by expediting demolition permits within an agreed-upon set of definitions and procedures before the historical commission ever needs to consider a particular permit. And by doing so, that moves some things off of the table right away and makes that whole permitting process more efficient. Third, the historical commission wants to expand the process for lifting a delay. It is possible to lift a delay when there's no reasonable likelihood that the property can be preserved, rehabilitated, or restored, and that the owner has made a bona fide attempt or reasonable efforts to locate a purchaser who can do that. So, our proposal is to include a provision to revisit a demolition delay when there is new data or information about the property that either was not known or not presented at the original hearing. So, new data or information that could affect the original determination of a delay. Fourth, the historical commission heard and understood various concerns. At one point, we'd been talking about including a provision for archaeological resources, and it was clear that that was a concern and that was premature in what we were proposing. Another example is the limited wording of a section about the expiration of a demolition permit for a structure that had been determined to be significant, so the expansion by adding language that acknowledged other kinds of existing permits still in effect. So, that is, if there were a demolition delay placed on a structure, there may be a building permit or a special permit or some kind of site plan review approval that was still in effect at the time a demolition delay expired, then those other permits should continue without being interrupted by... This has to do with the period after a demolition delay expires, a period during which nothing else should happen to the property. So, obviously, there are other permits that can still exist and should be allowed to run their course. And finally, in this list of examples, the commission wrestled with the duration of a demolition delay. There are pros and cons to any length of delay, certainly. There are, in this Commonwealth, six-month, nine-month, 12-month, 18-month, and now 24-month periods. And in the end, the commission decided to extend the length of delay to 18 months with the important check and balance mentioned earlier about being able to revisit a previous determination when there's new information in addition to the other criteria for lifting a delay. The 18 months is recommended by the state historical commission now as a best practice. There are 10 towns in the Commonwealth who have extended their demolition delay period to 18 months. The 18 months, also, the historical commission is expecting that the 18 months will help us in addressing kind of a range of situations, a range of circumstances, from the individual homeowner who may want to promote preservation but needs time to come up with alternatives or financing and so forth, to larger-scale development that may need encouragement to look for creative alternatives in combination, in partnership with the historical commission. And in support of that, the historical commission recognizes and endorses due diligence, its own due diligence assistance in the form of conditions assessments, historic structure reports, rehabilitation schemes, or alternative uses. So, the commission wants to be a partner in looking for those methods of preserving those historic assets. So, I guess, just in summary, our intended outcomes are to provide more precise guidance to the building commissioner in determining the significance of proposed alterations or removals in the course of reviewing building permit applications. We want to reduce the ambiguity about terms and definitions. We want to be able to focus the attention of the historical commission and the town on what constitutes its truly significant historical and architectural heritage. And we also want to reduce the burden on individual homeowners and contractors of having to interpret definitions in having to deal with permitting delays and the resulting complications and potentially increased costs that come out of that. So, that are just some comments on what I think you see in the revision that you have.
Questions in check.
Do we have a red-line strikeout version available to us?
The whole thing?
This whole bylaw was removed from the zoning bylaw and rewritten, so...
We don't have the existing bylaw.
You only have the existing bylaw if you have your zoning bylaw with you. So, I can pass my zoning bylaw down to you if you'd like to...
I have it on digital.
Okay. So, we can provide a strikeout version to accompany the planning board's report if you think that would be helpful. It got very messy. We did have one at one point, and it was practically unreadable because so many things were changing. But if you think that would be helpful, we could provide one with the planning board report.
Well, it sounds like it's a rewrite, basically, so that's fine to know that.
I have a question. Where's the, you're referencing the 25%, and I cannot find...
Definitions.
In definitions?
Significant alteration.
Alteration or removal, 25% of the total incorporated area of the building's exterior envelope. Is this the same, is that definition the existing, or no?
There is no existing definition for significant alteration.
So, the way I read that is you're talking about, basically, the building envelope, so the wall that is between the heated and cooled, and the conditioned space and the unconditioned space, but then there's structure, which would be fences and, you know, it would be all kinds of other things. So, how would, like, let's say that the request is to remove a fence. How would the 25%, if there's no measure, if there's no barrier between, if there's no building envelope, then how do you measure that?
It's my understanding that, that is a good question, but it's my understanding that fences are covered under another area.
Okay. Okay, so let's say it's a gazebo that's not heated and cooled, so then, I mean, I'm just curious, because the definition of structure is much broader than building envelope.
In that case, would it, I'm phrasing this as a question rather than an answer.
Yeah, right.
Might it be the, kind of, the surface area of the, not a volume, but a plane, a surface area of the...
I don't know.[1456.13][1456.13](laughter) But we'll leave, okay. Pardon?
I just have a question. I just wonder, why do you favor the exterior envelope? Like, what would happen if someone would keep the exterior envelope and significantly alter the interior of it? Historically significant.
Yeah. I think the, so, as I have read, as the commission has been looking at this and reading it, let's see, total incorporated area.
Go ahead.
The exterior area.
Traditionally, the historical commission has not been involved with the demolition of interior. They're mainly interested in keeping up the visual look of historic buildings from the exterior and the streetscape.
I'd like to tackle the previous one, too.
Just another, another thought about that is that significant structures, many, if you look at the definition of significant structure, so the bylaw's going to have sort of a two, it currently has and will have, a two-step process for determining what comes under review. For the most part, the historical commission deals with, you know, buildings of a certain age, and in this case, our revision includes a specific reference to buildings 50 years old or older, plus structures that are on the national register, state register, a certain age, so those would kind of automatically be reviewed if there is a, under these proposed alterations. So, and in those cases, the historical commission, I think, would consider interior changes for buildings that, for buildings that are not on these registers, national, state, and the state inventory. Then these other criterion kick into play. So, what we're thinking is that the most highly visible, easily identified historic resources would, they would come under review in any case.
The Rob had a comment?
Yeah, I was going to say, more or less, what was just said. So, the significant alteration doesn't, isn't a qualification for what gets a delay. It's a qualification for what gets a review. And so, the fence might not be part of the building envelope, but if it might be, the building commissioner might determine, under Section 13.30D, the proposed alteration might include, includes rule of architecturally important feature that may result in a dramatic change to the divine characteristics. So, if the building commissioner thinks that taking down part of the fence or all the fence, you know, changes the structure, then he would send it to the historical commission for review, and they might say fine, or they might say delay.
So, I can, sort of along that line, I can give an example of the kind of thing that we're wanting to avoid for everyone's benefit and circumstance very like it that would come to the historical commission. So, we have received demolition permit requests on things like changing windows in an ordinary dwelling that would make no significant alteration of any kind to the appearance of the house, but still, that's come before us and we've had to say something about it. Under the revised bylaw, that would stop with the building commissioner and would not need to go through a lengthy process involving the historical commission. On the other hand, let's say that there is an 1850s dwelling that has a remarkable window, one that has a great deal of historic significance. That would be caught in the criteria for permit review as being an element of a structure that is listed on one of these inventories or under D, that it's a proposed alteration, 1330D, a proposed alteration of an architecturally important feature that is nowhere near 25% of a structure's exterior envelope.
There's something else that I was doing the math here, so when I first... So when I first became an architect, 50 years ago was ancient. That was way back in the, the Dark Ages. But now 50 years ago is 1968, which is actually the, you know, especially in Amherst, it's the part of where really the sort of explosion in the, the growth of the town. And it's, you know, I would imagine this has been mapped somewhere. So now we're talking about all those, you know, like subdivisions that got built and, you know, a significant part of the town. So the scope of the Historical Commission already, by virtue of the 50 years, which will, is going to be, is a little bit mind-boggling. But then, I'm trying to make this calculation to all of those, say, houses and choose your subdivision that was built in the, you know, the 70s. Someone's going to have to make a calculation on all of this. So I guess what's worrying me is that in the effort to make the process more clear, it may not be, it may be having the reverse effect, like 25% of what, you know, questions, things like that.
So if I understand the first part of your comment about the 50-year sort of threshold, under the, under the procedures, that's the, that is the very bottom, basic, that's the floor of the, of the criteria. And that means, so if a building is 50 years old, then, then that means the building commissioner takes a look at, at the application. If the building commissioner then determines that any of these other conditions apply, then it may come to the Historical Commission. The building commissioner may not, may, may determine that the alterations are not going to be significant. He doesn't have any choice about whether a building is on the, on a registered district or, or on a register. So that is a, that's sort of a binary yes-no thing. And then there are indeed these other sort of discretionary areas. So if, if your concern about 50 years is that that opens too many, that might, that that might open a, a big box of things to, to review, that in itself doesn't, doesn't make the permit review process advance toward the Historical Commission.
Yeah, sort of-ish. I mean, I'm just trying, I wish I, we could do a field test of, you know, various structures. Because, and you mentioned the windows, but in some ways the windows are the most important feature of a house. So just changing windows, which seems benign, could actually, yeah, it's, having never, yeah. Having never been in your shoes and having to, you know, review these, I, I would love to, you know, for me, it would be helpful to actually see how the process works.
I just wanted to mention that the practice of the building commissioner and the Historical Commission has been to look at buildings 50 years old and older. And I understand from my colleagues, particularly the senior planner, Brandon Topons, who has a master's degree in architectural history, that that's common across the country, that many cities and towns look at buildings that are 50 years old and older.
It's a, I think it's going to be a national problem. The 50-year measure is a common measure, but that was all in the days before, you know, sort of rapid growth, so.
One of our, one of my colleagues on the Historical Commission comments that buildings of about 50 years in age, that's at a, that is at a time when movements towards subdivisions and suburbs and tract housing have, have come along. And in, you know, in 10 years or 20 years, we, we may feel that that's an important resource. Or, or, or examples of that type of development may be, may be of more interest than perhaps they are right now.
Maria?
This was an issue that's, I know you've debated a lot, and I want to find out more information about. You mentioned the State Historical Commission recently recommended the 18 months as the recommended timeframe for the delay, and it was changed from 12. And I heard your responses about, you know, it was helping people with financing and coming with creating alternatives, but I wasn't completely convinced that that was enough, that 12 months would not be sufficient. And I just want to hear more about your rationale, about why the increase.
I think we're, we're trying to sort of cover very different circumstances with, with that single tool. In the case of a, of a homeowner who may want to, who may find that there is, say, an outbuilding that is perhaps no longer needed, and they want to take it down, and Amherst has, Amherst has inventoried its outbuildings and finds them to be, you know, a kind of a, a characteristic feature of our sort of semi-rural and farming history. So there is, it's felt that there's value in saving those kinds of structures. But if it is, and if it is, perhaps if it's not a, a structure that's being used by an owner and they want to take it away, but they're willing to, they're willing to recognize that it's an asset in the town's history, then that owner might need some time to, might need more than a year to figure out how they can go about rehabilitating it or repairing it or finding, finding a way to move it. I think for, for limited, those with limited, more limited resources but best intentions, more time is better. On towns that have moved from 12 months to 18 months, they, they are using that change to, to motivate preservation, rather than just allowing that limited time to expire and then find that a demolition has happened with, perhaps without sufficient effort to find alternatives. And of course, the, I mean, as you, as you can see, the intent of the, the intent of the demolition delay is to motivate ways to find alternatives to, to destruction.
So if, if I may, the four that you had mentioned that had been subject to delay are, what are the four that have been subject to delay?
I think it was three. There was buildings on Hallock, on the corner of Hallock Street, a barn, and I'm going to have to turn to colleagues. Little Red Schoolhouse.
Okay. Yeah, so in, to me, it seems excessive, 18 months, because it can have also the possibility of forwarding, in the case of the Little Red Schoolhouse, however you, you know, stand on that, that was, you know, there was the, the Science Center that was behind that. And so there, did that go, was that the full one-year, was that a full one-year delay? So, and I, I don't know how that affected the timing, but to me, it's, I mean, from the sidelines, it seemed like a delayed, might have delayed that particular project. And then the, the Sea Hallock, I'm not familiar with where that is in the process. And the other one was the barn, the barn we, I'm well aware of, of that one. But that, another six months wouldn't have caused anything different.
Well, you know, I think if, if you look at it from the perspective of what the Historical Commission is responsible for and what it's charged to do, it, it, yes, the Little Red Schoolhouse was sort of in the, in the center of a place where, where a big project was underway. And it's, you know, it's not the intention of the bylaw or the Historical Commission to delay projects. It is to preserve history. So, and a case, a case like that, again, regardless of where you stand on that particular project, if the, if the principle is preservation or move, moving something or rehabilitate, finding another use for it, then that's certainly a case where more time would have been used.
And, okay. I saw Steve's hand go up, but if, if you wouldn't mind waiting until public...
Of course.
Yeah. Christine?
Still on the 18-month demolition delay, did, first, just a small question. Did you say 10 in the Commonwealth? Head switched to 18. All right. So I did some looking and it definitely seemed like the norm in the Commonwealth for the 360-something towns was 12 months, with quite a significant group being nine months. I only found six that were the 18 months. I'm, I'm sure you're right with the 10. But like, one of them was like the city of Brookline. And if you actually, so they're listed under that they went to the 18 month, but if you actually go and read their demolition policy, it says that they do still 12 months unless it's listed on the National Historical, and then it would be an 18. So it just seemed to me that, you know, we're asking you reasons to say why the 18, because this is not the usual way that towns, and there are a lot of historical towns in our Commonwealth. So again, if there are any other, like, why are we going for the, the most edgy, the 18? But also, you mentioned 24. Are there any towns in the Commonwealth that have gone with the 24?
There's one, one town that has a 24-month delay, and that is Milton, I think it's Milton. Well, I'm, I'm looking at a, at a list of towns with 18-month delays, and our neighbor, Leverett, has an 18-month delay. Acton, Amesbury, Brookline, Chatham, Leverett, Maynard, Medfield, Newton. Some are large towns, some are small. Again, I would say that we're, we're looking for ways to, you know, sort of go back to the, sort of the release valves. One is, you know, that we very rarely impose a demolition delay, so it's, that's not a big risk. But when we do, we want to make sure that the, the preservation goal has the greatest chance of succeeding. And 18 months gives just that much more time for, for considering alternatives and working up plans for alternatives. It also allows the Historical Commission time, more time to assist and put some of its resources toward examining the condition of the property, whether it is, whether there are reasons that the commission should reconsider, including, you know, an appeal process.
So just following, if you're, you keep saying it, there's been so few, then to me, it's not like the commission's bogged down. So again, why 18 and not 12?
Yeah. Well, so going to the, sort of the first question about there's been so few, the commission has been bogged down with many, many dozens of permit review requests. So there are portions of this revision that really try to address that, that factor. The, the small number of delays imposed related to the period of time that we're, that we're wanting to, to look for, to work with owners about, on alternatives. It's true that we don't have, we don't have a large pool of data to work with. That is, in these last four years with our three demolition delays, there were, there was one instance with the Hallock Street property where we did commission a, an assessment of the property. And that took, from start to finish, that took quite a long time to get that, the professional consultant to come in and do that assessment. It took probably 10 out of the 12 months. Having a little more time, you know, the, the, the risk of running out of time for a complicated project is, I think that's a real, that's a real risk. And a sort of similar situation with the schoolhouse, that that, as a, as a preservation matter, from that perspective, it could, that could also have used more time.
Was there a vote, what was the vote of the Historical Commission on the?
On the 18 months?
On, on the whole package?
On the, on the entire package?
Was there a vote, or?
The, well, it's still under, it's, it's kind of still under construction, so there have been votes on various pieces of it. The vote for, the vote for the, the 18 months was three?
Four.
Four. Four to one to one.
And if I may, and I don't want, why not wait for a complete package then that's been voted on in its entirety? I mean, what, is there an urgency to, what's the urgency, I guess? In other words, why not wait until the Historical Commission has a complete package and then voted on it at that time?
Did you? There's a sense of urgency among people on the second floor because of the lack of clarity of the process.
Second floor here?
The second floor being the building commissioner, the planning department, and, well, not conservation, but building commissioner and planning. There, last summer, there was a kind of eruption of cases that went before the Historical Commission because the, the letter of the law, of the existing bylaw essentially requires everything to go to the Historical Commission for their opinion about whether something needs to have a public hearing or not. And that draws out the process. And there's, there was a kind of truncated amount of time in which that could happen. And one project slipped through the cracks and ended up getting demolished, and so...
What was that project?
Garage.
A garage.
McLaur.
On McLaur. It was a garage on McLaur. So things, without having a proper process with clearly defined roles and who does what when and what the proper notification process is and all of that, things can get very muddy and then people get upset. And we've had several instances of that happening over the last nine months or so. And so the effort here is made to clarify the process, make it clear which projects should actually go before the Historical Commission and which projects can be dealt with by the building commissioner, and be very clear about what the notification process is, et cetera. So that's really the, the effort. Living with the existing bylaw is going to cause difficulty.
Greg?
Does the urgency expressed by staff as described in the support for taking an action on this article extend to the issue that we have been discussing at length about the extension of the 12 to the 18-month delay? of the twelve to the eighteen-month delay?
I think staff is neutral on that matter, whatever the Historical Commission thinks in the end. I don't personally see a need for the eighteen-month delay, but that's my personal opinion.
So I think I'm falling with that. I don't see that being the glitch in the bylaw. I think the bylaw is trying to be fixed in certain areas. And to me, that seems like this is being added. And so I'm fine with the effort to fix the other kinds of things, but I don't support that, you know, that part of it. So I don't know, so I'm confused on how, you know, our job is to, because this is a zoning bylaw, our job is to make a recommendation. So on one hand, I'd hate to vote no because of that particular issue, but on the other hand, I can't, I can't see the justification on how that would be to, that that's the thing that needs to be fixed in the bylaw.
So I was going to point out at this point that the zoning subcommittee did make a recommendation on that, which was to recommend the article in general, but make no recommendations of the planning board on this section about the eighteen months.
I'm sorry, I should have asked for the zoning subcommittee. That wasn't in my script. Anyone else before we open it to the public?
So I'll, I'll give the, the rest of the zoning subcommittee report. I don't have much to add. Most of it was covered by various people. I would point out, though, that, that this article was written in conjunction with the Building Commissioner and Planning Staff, so it's not, it's not totally a creation of the Historical Commission. And so, so presumably, the Building Commissioner will not want to put in any language that he's not going to be able to understand or follow. And, and the other thing that I wanted to point out that is a change from the existing language is the fine for violation, which is currently three hundred dollars, and it would go down to one hundred dollars. Fine for violation, if you demolish something that you're not supposed to. It's, it's three hundred dollars currently. The existing language, or the new language would lower it to one hundred dollars.
That's per day.
Oh, per day.
Yeah, per day, sorry. Yeah. Well, as long, as long as the violation lasts, yeah.
So that would be per day, like if you tear down something two days before the permit? No, how does it?
If you tear something down without a permit, if you tear something down that, that has been, well, let's see, what is the language?
It's not, you don't have to. That's, that's okay. Jane, don't worry about it.
Oh, yeah, if you tear something down that where, where, and a delay has been imposed, and then, and then it's demolished, and it's a hundred dollars a day until it is restored to a condition acceptable to the Historical Commission. That's in the current, that's in the current bylaw, and that's something that's, that's similar again across the state. But the Historical Commission's intent there was to bring that, was not to change, not to, not to alter that section, but really to just bring the fine levied in line with other fine, with the fee schedule structure for the town.
Chris?
The fine for violation of the zoning bylaw in general is a hundred dollars a day. So the effort was to bring it in line with the other fines in the zoning bylaw.
So shall we open it to Jack?
Is it, what were you going to say?
Open it to the public.
Oh, okay, I do have something. I kind of have reservations for the eighteen-month versus twelve-month extension, but I've also had questions. You referenced new data, and I would just, when that's come across, it's consistent with the existing bylaw during the review. Is that, is that correct? Chris? I wasn't, you were mentioning one of your points about coming across new data. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, the, so the, the, the existing bylaw says, you know, that if the Commission is satisfied that an owner has looked into possible purchase by someone else, or looked into other ways to preserve or rehabilitate or move a structure, and, and doesn't see any reasonable prospect of doing that, then the Commission can remove the, remove the delay. This, this new piece is if there is new information turned up about the structure that would reverse, that could alter the Commission's determination, that that's another good reason to lift the delay. So a practical example is if, is if there's been a delay imposed in order to, to determine the, the age of, say, a certain element of the building. And we do due diligence, we get a, someone to come in and do, say, I don't know, dendrochronology. And it turns out that the building is not nearly as old as we thought it was, or that, and this is something that happened in the case of the Halleck Street property. It was, it was believed through documentary evidence that a portion of that structure was actually a very significant, had been moved from another place in Amherst, was a very significant building, and was assumed to have been part of one of the, the vestry room of the Congregational Church, the one that preexisted, the one down the street by many, many years. But through that, through that testing, through dendrochronology, it was learned that it, it really could not have been that old. So that's a case in which that kind of new information both adds to our knowledge about the historic structure, but also would have a significant effect on the Historical Commission's determination of making that delay in the first place.
Let's open it up to the public. Steve.
I'm actually on the Historical Commission, too.
Okay, quasi-public.
Steve Wim, I'm also a member of the Historical Commission, and I just wanted to address the eighteen-month increase. I talked to Stephen O'Donnell, who's the, the Chair of the Historical Commission in Milton, which increased their delay to twenty-four months. And I asked him, you know, what was, why they did that. And the reason why he said they did that was because people, there are a lot of buildings that were coming down in Milton in which developers were not making a good faith effort to preserve historic structures, that they were basically taking the attitude that they would just wait out the year. And that's why they, they doubled it. And so I think that, I mean, so it's not meant to be punitive, it's meant to encourage developers to make a good faith effort to preserve historic buildings, and that's what I was told. In terms of the historic, I also was in touch with Chris Skelly, who's the Head of Staff for the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and he said, and I wanted to make this different, I know that Ted may come up later, the Commission itself doesn't make a recommendation of best practices. The staff made a recommendation that eighteen months is best practice. He said that, I also, I wrote him, and I can show you my correspondence with him, I asked him for any scientific studies, how many, if there were any studies that would support an eighteen-month rather than a shorter period. And he said, and this is a quote, he said, "I do not have any scientific studies on how many additional properties are saved through an eighteen-month delay instead of a twelve. I have only what I hear from local commissions statewide, as they have increased them to six to twelve and twelve to eighteen. The comments are resoundingly that the longer delay provides more opportunities to save a building." I also asked him if there's a trend to eighteen months. And he said, yes, there is definitely a trend to increase to eighteen months. A few cities and towns besides Milton are considering twenty-four months. So I think to augment what Jane was saying, we went to eighteen months because we don't foresee hopefully revising the bylaws again, and we were following the MHC staff recommendations. In terms of other things, just to augment what Jane said, you know, we, we tried to, like, there were gaps that were in the old bylaws, and for example, a building would come under question, they would say was structurally unsound, and it turned out the Building Commissioner was going to check out to see if the building, barn, for example, was structurally unsound, but they weren't communicating their findings to the Historical Commission because it wasn't laid out in the bylaws that they had to. So we were finding out from, from Rob Moore that, oh, yeah, I looked at that barn, and it was structurally sound, and we're going, you know, what? You know, why didn't we hear that? And he would say, because it's not mandated that I should tell you that. So that, we're trying to fill in gaps like that. And in terms of the twenty-five percent, that was an, an attempt to increase the threshold to have people have their renovations delayed. We were trying to make it easier for them. I know that Jane made that, that clear, but I wanted to just emphasize that. And we really struggled with the definition of significant alterations in terms of coming up with a twenty-five percent, you know, percentage. You know, I'm a screenwriter, and I was telling the people in the Historical Commission that I've done lots of arbitrations, I was a member of the Screen Writers Guild, and we have definitions for what, who gets credit. And it's like thirty-three percent of it's based on original underlying material, and it's fifty, some, subsequent writers have to contribute fifty percent of its original screenplay, and it's based on structure and characters and dialogue, et cetera. But we always had an exception that, and we struggled to get this in, that if there was one element that wasn't twenty, fifty percent or twenty, or thirty-three percent, like, like Jane was saying, like a window, that's beautiful, but it's not twenty-five percent, we were struggling with the language, how do we preserve that? How does that make a trigger? And I know that several of you are architects, and if you have language that is better than what we came up with, you know, we're all ears to how to do that.
What could go wrong?
Excuse me?
Nothing.
So what else was I going to say? Anyway, so our charge is different than your charge. Our charge is, is that we're the ultimate authority to protect and preserve our town's architectural and historical heritage. And anyway, that's where we're coming from. Thank you.
I just wanted to say a little bit about a timeline. Do you mind if I just interject this?
Yeah.
That the Historical Commission is meeting, I believe, on the twenty-sixth of March, and they will take your comments and talk about them and discuss whether they want to change what they've written or keep it the same. And then the Select Board will be signing the warrant on April second. So whatever state this is in on April second, that's the state that it's going to go to the town meeting in. And then, of course, things can be changed on the floor of town meeting, but not to a great extent. So I just wanted to put that piece of information out there.
Change down, but not up. You're here as a public?
I am here as a public member. My name is John Kuhn, Kuhn &amp; Riddle Architects. I've been practicing in town for forty-three years. Much of my work has been in the town, and I've worked on preservation projects, renovation projects, large and small. I have the distinction of also having worked on one of the three that got a demolition delay, so I offer my comments from that perspective. I, I support the idea of demolition delay, I support preservation, and I, I think the redoing of Article thirteen is, is a good thing, because I think there are some weaknesses in it. There have been some improvements, but I still think there's some significant weaknesses, and I, I want to point a few of those out. And some of them have already been mentioned, but the first one is, is under the, the fifty years in age, and I, Mr. Schreiber's already commented on this, that that means something that's built before nineteen sixty-eight is, is under review. That is a common age for review that you see if you look at some of the other demolition delay ordinances and bylaws in the state, but there are others that use seventy-five years, and Alexandria, Virginia uses a hundred years. So you could question the fifty years, I don't think that's gospel. I would guess, I don't know the, the actual statistics, but I think that puts eighty to ninety percent of the, the building stock in, in Amherst under review. Certainly neighborhoods like Echo Hill would be there, and Amherst Woods in about ten years would start to become under review. I also realize that in seven years, projects that I worked on in my early career will be considered historical, and that made me feel really old today. The second thing that has also been mentioned is the, the definition of significant alteration and the twenty-five percent term. It's easy to throw numbers around, and sometimes you really have to look at what that means when you're actually adding on to a building. It's, you can, you can reach that twenty-five percent threshold very quickly. I should also point out that Newton, which has been mentioned already, in, they, they established their demolition bylaw in nineteen eighty-five, and in two thousand and eleven, they had a seventy, they had a twenty-five percent exterior envelope bylaw, and they changed it to fifty percent. So, and they are a different community than Amherst, and I think some of the communities are dealing with a lot more teardowns than we are, but, but that is one of the, the bylaws that they changed. So I'm not here to suggest that twenty-five percent is the wrong number, but I think it, it bears some, some review and study before it's just arbitrarily selected. The third item I wanted to mention is the definition of structure. I don't have a, a problem with the basic definition, however, some bylaws in some of the other towns and cities in the Commonwealth identify incidental structures, such as sheds, fences, place structures, and things like that. And I think that ought to be, I don't think a fence ought to be lumped in with structures, or perhaps there should be more definition there. The fourth item I wanted to mention is thirteen point three-two. That is that the building permit application shall act as the demolition permit application. And that's a, that, it sounds innocuous, but it's not. Halleck Street has been mentioned, that was a project that I was involved with, with Mr. Roberts, who's here, that, that was, was put on demolition delay for twelve months. And the requirement in this, the way this bylaw is written, is that you have to apply for a building permit. And to apply for a building permit means you need to have all your drawings done, you need to have a complete set of documents. And I can tell you, if you don't submit complete documents to the Town of Amherst, they get kicked back at you. So to have to go through to that extent before you know whether you're going to experience a demolition delay or not is, is ludicrous. In the case of the Halleck Street project, we applied for the demolition delay, we had our hearing, the demolition delay was imposed, and, and we go on, and Mr. Roberts is not going to pay to have construction drawings done until it's, until we're going to actually build the project. So I, I think there's, that's, that's a real problem there, is if you are requiring the applicants to apply for a building permit to find out if they're going to be delayed or not, or even reviewed, I think there's a, a major issue there. The fifth item I'd like to point out is that, the one that you've been talking about, which is twelve and eighteen months. I, I think twelve months is fine. Most of the towns in, in Massachusetts are six to twelve. Yes, some of them are eighteen. Newton was mentioned as eighteen, but Newton is actually, they, they reviewed that as they were going to go to eighteen months, and they, they changed it to make it twelve months, they changed, they stayed at twelve months, and they increased it to eighteen months for those buildings that are on the National Register, which I think you had mentioned. And that's something to consider there, because that's a higher bar to pass. I think twelve months is plenty of time to look at alternatives and, and see if the building can be saved or moved. I don't think you really gain anything by pushing it to eighteen months. I think where you see eighteen months is in towns where there's significant teardowns, and Newton is an example of that, where a lot of buildings are being torn down to build McMansions. And that's really not the case in Amherst, and I don't think twelve, I don't think eighteen months is, is necessary. The sixth item I wanted to mention is Section thirteen point seven, expiration for no action. This is, I believe, a new section, was not in the original Article thirteen. And what this says is that if you do not delay, if you do not demolish your, your building within a year, that you have to go back and, and start the hearing process all over again. To go back to Halleck Street, we are, we, we had a twelve-month delay, that building's not been built because of economic reasons, but to, to think that we would have to go back again to go through the process all over again does not seem to be fair. The last item I'd like to mention is the, the standards under Article 13.4, the standards for designation of a significant structure. I'd point out that the Mass Historical Commission, I'm going to read this very quickly because it's short. These are, these are the reasons that you, if your, if a building, say, is more than 50 years old, older, and it meets one of these criteria, that it should be reviewed for demolition delay. The building is importantly associated with one or more historic persons or events, or with broad architectural, cultural, political, economic, or his, or social history of the town or the Commonwealth. Or the building is historically or architecturally important in terms of period, style, method of building, construction, or association with a recognized architect or builder, either by itself or in the context of a group of buildings. That's very simple. And you'll find, if you look at some of the demolition delay ordinances in other towns, that that's the wording that's used. It's very broad, but it, it also kind of covers a lot of ground. The current Article 13 and the new Article 13 all have lengthy explanations on what, what criteria are used once a building is established, that it's over 50 years old, to establish whether there can be a demolition delay or not. I'm not going to read all 11. You, you've probably read them yourself, but some of them, I'll read two. It has interest or value as part of the development, settlement patterns, economic, educational, industrial heritage, or cultural characteristics of the town of Amherst, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Massachusetts, or the nation. I mean, that is about as broad a statement as you can make. And I mean, if you're trying to establish criteria for delaying demolition, the wording of the, of these 11 items are so broad that you'll always be able to find something to hang your hat on. The last one I'll mention is 13.43A. The site is part of or related to a square, park, or other distinctive area. I mean, so if your building is over 50 years old and it's across from a park and you're, you're affecting more than 25 percent of the, of that area, you are subject to possible demolition delay. I think the wording here is so broad that it kind of dumbs down the, the whole notion of historic. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Chris?
I wanted to just clarify a couple of things that Mr. Kuhn said. One of the things is about the building permit being required as a demolition delay permit application. So the intent of this, and perhaps the wording isn't exactly right, is that the building permit application form would be used instead of the demolition delay application form because the demolition delay application form is very complicated and it's really hard to understand. So the building commissioner felt that by using the building permit application form, it would be easier to go through this process. So there's no need to come up with a full set of architectural or site plans in order to apply for this review. It's merely saying that you want to demolish the building on the demo, on the building permit application form. So that's one thing. The other thing is with regard to the expiration after a year, that would only occur if you didn't already have a special permit, site plan review, or a building permit that is still in existence. If you did have those things and you were still on track to build whatever it is that you were planning to build, your demolition delay situation would stay the same and it wouldn't expire. So in the case of Halleck Street, I believe that they are still within the two years that they had to build their building under site plan review. And so even though their demolition delay period has expired, they would still be covered by that previous review. So those are the things I wanted to say.
But sometimes, if I may, but sometimes the, the state has intervened on some of things like the expiration of special permits. So like during the recite, and I don't know if that more, so the state extended all special, basically overrode, yeah?
That period has expired?
That period has expired. But that was, that was a time that the state basically gave an extension to all special permits that were issued in all the municipalities. But then this demolition delay would not. So in other words, that's sort of a local rule, but the state can, you know, extend that other rule, the special permit part of it.
I think if the building commissioner knew that, that a land use permit was still in effect, then he would consider that the demolition delay review process was still in effect.
But it doesn't say that. But that's an interesting one because it's counterintuitive. Because the, we've heard that the purpose of 18 months is to give owners a chance to find other options. So in a case where someone's actually is trying to find other options, they could risk, so it's sort of counterintuitive that it penalizes somebody that might actually be making a good faith effort to figure out other options. And I'm sorry, there is a hand. Yeah, yeah, please.
My name is Jan Hart, and I'm on the Historical Commission. And I live in southeast Amherst in a house built in 1969. So I'll be suffering from this next year. I just want to answer a couple more things. One is that the three-point, 13.70 was there. The numbers have all changed because we've done so much to modify the document that you won't find it under that number, but it was there in that wording. Also, something Christine, you did that we kept doing and something we've taken out of this, just an example of how inaccurate this document was, it kept referring to a demolition delay permit. There's no such thing as asking for, applying for a delay. You apply for a permit to demolish. And it was, it was in this document over and over and we keep using this wording because we've been saying it for so long. But it's, it's wrong. So we just have to, you know, really realize, we spent a year and a half working on this. This is not something that we just cooked up last month, right? And I want to speak to the 50 years. And to answer Mr. Kuhn, there's two things that we, we talked about 75 years. We certainly considered it and we realized that as, as we move into the middle of the 20th century, we're moving into an explosion, as you said, of housing in Amherst and also a very big change in styles. However, there's a couple of reasons that we kept the 50 years. One is that the buildings that were 19th and early 20th century that mostly have been saved in this town, other than some small areas like the Karach, are mostly elite buildings that were built by richer people. They were built of higher quality materials and therefore they lasted and they made it to the point where the Historical Commission was formed and could consider them. But suburban, smaller housing estates are made by, you know, in, in larger quantities for people of lower income. And we don't have enough representation of that from earlier periods. And it would be nice if in the, the next period, so to speak, that we reach, we do save more of the housing from the regular population, not just the mansions that were built. Also, mid-modern is a significant style. Many people don't like it yet and it may, some of it may be very poor versions of it. But if there's a classic home that is a good example of a mid-modern 20th century style, then it, it should be considered and not just constantly move that date so that the styles that we think of as, you know, less attractive or less Amherst historical character are left off. Because at some point in time, maybe this will be a town that will be historically known for having had an explosion in the 60s and 70s and will represent the type of building that happened in the 20th century. We don't know, you know, but if you, if you think a couple hundred years from now, maybe we'll be one of the only towns left that people go, come back and look at and say, wow, look at those 60s and 70s, you know, the, the good ones that were kept, that represent that kind of building in those towns in those years. So we think that 50 years is fair to keep. And certainly the building commissioner is not going to send every single house to us. But any classic example that's still in its original condition, that hasn't been modified, should qualify for review by him at least. Thank you.
Maureen?
My interest in this comes from two sources. One is I really came of age politically in Amherst over the Warren Barn, Warren Brown barn. So that discussion at the Historic Commission as a demolition delay is still quite vivid in my mind and makes me really appreciate and value the clarity and the detail of this document. The document, I think that we were working under at that time, when there was such confusion and difficulty, referred to significant without really defining it so that we were really kind of pulling our hair about, was Warren Brown significant? Was his barn significant? Is it something that is in, you know, it was very, very difficult to, to agree on a decision there. And I find the detail in this document very helpful. And so I really want to note that. On a small issue, but I think one that is important, 1332A, I think it's very valuable that the demolition question be raised and discussed as early as possible in the process. And without trying to wordsmith now, I think there's a way to change the language of 1332A so that it's clear that when the intention to build, the application form is itself submitted, it becomes clear whether or not demolition is intended. Because one of the things that I've learned or felt during the Warren Brown issue is that there really wasn't sufficient prior interaction of the board with, with the, with the details of that particular piece of architecture to, to really come to a decision. And I also felt that with the Halleck Street, I mean, that it was coming to a hearing, coming to a head without a lot of prior discussion. I might have been out of the circle on that. But that leads me to what is for me, the, the two other issues that are important. One is I'm a member of the local historic district commission right now. And that becomes an interesting wrinkle in this whole process. Because although it's clear that Mr. Moore would be making a decision about whether demolition, a demolition request needed to go to the Historic Commission on the basis of 1330, the only place where a local historic district, of which we have two, would come in would be under D, dramatic change of the building's defining characteristics, which would presumably then lead us to those criteria, which Mr. Kuhn quite correctly said could seem to be very general, vague, and all-inclusive. And yet it was precisely in the case of the second local historic district that small houses built by Irish immigrants and blacks from the South and the North that were not at all distinguished in their own time, were considered worth preserving, having been built in the 1860s and 70s at this point in time in 2017, which is when we got that. So, you know, I, I consider that a difficulty that we would need to sort out because our local historic districts, the two of them, are not necessarily connected to the, the National Registry or the State Registry, and yet they are historic districts, some parts of which qualify under the criteria. Yes?
The local historic district has its own set of rules. They're in the general bylaw and it's administered by a different group than the Historical Commission. So it's really two separate things that are going on. If something, something could come to the Historical Commission and also go to the local historic district commission and follow each set of rules.
So in, in, just in that case, I would, I haven't looked again at the local historic district regulations in relationship to this. I just saw this document tonight. But there would be an interesting question about the coordination of the two sets of regulations.
So I think we need to kind of...
Could I just make one?
I'm sorry.
More comment? I really...
I'm so sorry.
That's all right. I, I know you want to move on. The final one is a comment on 1352. I would really hope that there was something explicit that could be said, either in these regulations or in some kind of procedural directives within the Historic Commission for the responsibility of members of the commission or members of staff to be in active negotiation and work with the owners or developers. I, I was very disappointed to see a demolition delay within kind of a year, you know, the clock ticking. And I, I would like some statement of intention that there would be deliberation about what could be preserved, what could not be preserved, what could be renovated, what could not be renovated. And, and that that be a collaboration from the very first moment that I mentioned when the intention to build was submitted. So that it just wasn't the clock ticking until we could then move on to another step. That's all.
I just need to regroup with the planning board here. So it's 8:30 and we have another public hearing and we have some, you know, I can see that we have a number of people here for other issues. So our options are to continue the discussion or to continue the hearing or to, what do you all think?
It seems to me whether or not we continue the discussion now for some time, that there's a possibility that the Historical Commission might, in fact, make a decision to alter the language of this prior to the deadlines for town meetings. So I'd be hesitant to make a final recommendation before knowing if that's going to take place.
So you, your, your suggestion is that we could simply relay what our concerns are and not take a vote and continue the, the hearing?
Okay. I like that idea, actually.
Did, did you all hear that? Yeah, and you seem to be?
Mine, too.
Okay. Okay. Sarah?
Mine?
Yeah, yeah.
Sarah LaCour, Executive Director of the Amherst Bid and resident in Precinct 9. Most of what I wanted, I had just a couple of additional comments, pieces. One is just, I think perhaps clerical on page one, 13.14, still has archaeological sites in there. And I'm assuming since they took out all the other references to archaeological, then that should probably come out. And then more substantive, I have a concern, 13.30D, in terms of discussion of significance and significant alteration, the 25 percent. And then the discussion of how much is too much that's going before the Historical Commission. This strikes me as being very broad and assumes that a building commissioner is going to have some kind of understanding about architectural history. So is the building commissioner going to know a Connecticut River Valley doorway when he sees it, he or she sees it? Are they going to understand a historical cornice versus anything else? So that seems particularly broad. So why bother with the 25 percent if you're now giving a building inspector leeway to decide any other thing? So that, that's concerned to me. The 18 months is also of concern. I appreciate, you know, the thought in, in looking at alternatives and options, but I don't think you're going to find anything in, in the 12 to 18 months that couldn't have been determined in the 12 months initially. I think beyond 12 months, you get punitive and onerous. And the majority of the communities that have demolition delay bylaws, which is actually 42 percent of towns in Massachusetts, many towns have not passed them because they are controversial. So only 42 percent of towns have them. And out of that number, only 10 are 18 months. The majority are, as we've heard, six to 12. In reference to the 13.52, which is this escape valve or so-called, or appeal process, we actually, that is currently in the initial bylaw, the one in, currently existing, where there's a reference for the commissioner to, if they're satisfied that there's no alternatives found, or they're satisfied, the commissioner's satisfied that no, all continuing bona fide, reasonable efforts have been made, then the demolition delay may be lifted. In the new language, it may be lifted, but there has to be a public hearing held. So they're actually adding more work for themselves and making it a little more onerous for the property owner. for the property owner. And lastly, regarding 13.7, expiration for no action, that is an entirely new section, and I appreciate, I commented on this prior, and they did add the section where it should follow an existing land use permit if one exists, but I would be concerned by a residential homeowner that, for whatever reasons, whether it's financial, you know, other economic reasons, cannot actually get the building down within the year and would have to come back. I'm not sure. I understand some of the impetus for that, but I still think that seems onerous to a property owner. That was my quick run-through.
You know, you brought up the point about the billing commissioner, and so the, and we on the planning board have given authority, you know, the town meeting has passed bylaws that gave that billing commissioner some more authority than he had, you know, for site plan review issues. And our experience is that he's been very conservative with that, but that's the current billing commissioner. And you bring up an excellent point every time that the billing commissioner would make this decision about this and that. My understanding of him is that if there's any ambiguity whatsoever, he would defer to, it would go, you know, to you guys. But that's this billing commissioner, and so then the, you know, assuming there's a next, there will be someday a next billing commissioner, that, we don't know. So it gives a lot, it makes a strong, it gives a sort of a strong billing commissioner form of government, if there is such a thing, with expertise in, as you've said, historic issues. So I, I'm actually a little bit surprised that he was, you know, involved in writing this, because I think that he often is more conservative.
He doesn't make these decisions by himself. He consults with staff on the second floor, and we do have expertise in the area of architectural history, so he consults with other people to make these decisions.
So make us proud. Oh, yeah. Please come, no, please come up.
I could just send something.
Oh, no, please come up if you can.
I'll try to keep it brief. I'm Tom Davies, and I'm the director of design construction at Amherst College and live here in town. So I'm, I come with a unique perspective of having been through demolition delays in the course of the last few years. I've experienced two professionally, working for Amherst College. So I guess that's a large percentage of the overall that have occurred, I guess. The college, you may have guessed, does a tremendous amount of historic preservation type of work. We've been awarded a number of different awards for historic preservation from mass, statewide agencies and whatnot. So clearly, we do a lot of work along those lines. Despite that, we have had a couple of significant challenges relative to demolition delay, and both of them were actually demolition. One of my, one of our concerns really doesn't have to do with demolition, it has to do with all of the other stuff that this proposal touches in altering structures. So I guess if I can just point out a couple of different things, and this has been talked about, I mean, the title of it makes sense, you know, historical and architectural significance and whatnot, but then it, and with an intention to provide owners with significant structures time to consider alternatives to demolition, but then it also just goes, and applies to non-significant structures, in my opinion, and applies to alteration, even window and door replacements, types of things. So it seems to have some inconsistency in that. I will reiterate the reality of 13.30D, which puts into the building commissioners bailiwick, making a determination that has nothing to do with the great range of expertise that the building commissioner has, but that does not include architecture or architecture history, and so is not realistically able to make a determination on this criteria without it being very conservative. So as such, the responsible commissioner, perhaps reluctantly, has only one option, that's to refer things to the Historic Commission for any permit requests that could be deemed to include removal of anything architecturally important that may result in a dramatic change to the building's defining characteristics. So, you know, somebody's got a leaking cupola on their barn, and they want to just take it off, or whatever, old garage doors that, you know, are going to be replaced. So it's difficult to imagine how this is going to reduce the load associated with the bylaw. Okay. So I would add to this conversation that the addition of this issue, an historically architectural, architecturally important feature, is a late-breaking change. Recently, I was at a hearing with the Historic Commission, and the definition of significant alteration was 25% of the exterior. There are concerns about that, that have already been stated, but this element did not exist. So this is something that despite the year and a half of development of this, I was unaware of at that, maybe we all missed it, but this is something new.
Sorry, which one, which particular part is the...
The definition, well, D, removal of an architecturally important feature, right? Anything, something small, a door, a feature, you know, I would question whether removing the shutters from your house qualifies, you know, that type of thing, because it's no longer defined, right? So that's something new. Okay. And what I want to add to the conversation is that this is exactly what the Historical Commission stated would never become part of what our town's property owners would face when the demolition delay was first debated in front of the planning board, whatever that was, six years ago or so. And that, of course, was a six-month delay at that point. But a major concern at the time was, what about the small issue? What about the homeowner who's, you know, reciting or putting a new garage door or whatever it is? And the assurance was that that wasn't, that wasn't going to become part of it. But now we have a new piece here that looks like it opens the door to all those types of things. So John Kuhn also spoke to 13.4. I would point to 13.43B, that a structure is of geographic importance because it is, quote, "a familiar visual feature of a neighborhood, village center, et cetera." So we're talking now about geographic importance due to familiarity, which to me seems pretty far afield from the stated purpose of the article. So by this definition, anything visible to the public could be interpreted, I wouldn't say would be, and it's not the intention that it would be, but it could be interpreted as a significant structure, so the CVS building, perhaps, you know, et cetera. All right? 13.7 says after waiting 20 months, by the way, it's really 20 months, because the 18 month is the actual demolition delay, or whatever you want to call it, alteration delay or whatever, but there's a process before and a process after it, so 20 months, you can't, okay. So I wanted to point that out. All of that is just delaying a number of illogical, I think, aspects to this, but the fundamental, I think, question remains, which is, how does a delay of 19 and a half months, 20 months, whatever you want to call it, further the intention? The punitive side is clear. For example, if Amherst College is putting an addition on one of the former fraternity dormitories, and it's more than 25% of the exterior because we're extruding an end to it, I can imagine all kinds of projects like this. Clearly, it's over 50 years old, it's brought to historic, historic says, no, you know, we don't like that because of whatever reason, you know, maybe it's not these people, it's other people, who knows what? We're creating a structure that enables that to happen. Postponing that, you know, call it $20 million project by another academic year is real money. So let's not kid ourselves that there isn't a strong punitive side to extending the delay. And my question would be, how does, you know, is there something that is equally demonstrable that shows benefit, that clearly preserves for the town's good? And it would have to be a pretty strong, I think, demonstrable benefit to offset millions of dollars of additional cost to property owners. So that's, those are the pieces I wanted to point out. Thanks.
So do we want to try to have a consolidated list of our concerns, or do, because we've been, I mean, through the public comment and through comments from other, public comment, we've gotten both sides? So do we need to consolidate, or shall we just make a, is there a proposal to continue and let the Historical Commission members that are here sort of interpret what they heard?
I have something I wanted to say about the schedule, which is that you do have a meeting scheduled for April 4th.
Yep.
We had proposed adding another meeting or substituting a meeting on April 11th. If you keep the meeting on April 4th, you might be able to deal with this and one other item that's on the agenda for April 4th, and perhaps even the marijuana bylaw, which you're going to discuss later. So you might want to continue this public hearing to April 4th and then make a decision at that time with potentially some new language from the Historical Commission.
And also, I did want to make one thing about the billing commissioner before, I'm sorry, we're not discussing this, but the comment about the billing commissioner is a very good one, because it actually does say billing commissioner in the bylaw. It doesn't say billing commissioner in consultation with other staff members. And so when it says billing commissioner, any future billing commissioner will read that, and so, but, I'm sorry to interrupt, that just came flying into top of my head.
So I still believe that we should continue this public hearing and make final recommendations after we see final language from the Historical Commission, but also they have indicated they are waiting to hear from us our recommendations so they can make those changes, if any. And I would propose that, to that list of changes, we put at the top revisiting the 18-month demolition delay and looking carefully at section 13.30D, which we've discussed quite a bit tonight.
I would also like to add the 25-year, I mean, the 50-year to 75.
It's, yeah, no, I agree with that. Okay. So, motion?
I'll move to continue the public hearing to April 4th.
There's a second? So all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Some, Jack just left, but, does that work for you?
As we said the other evening, there is a schedule for the order to...
So why don't we keep going? So we're going to go on to A10 zoning marijuana uses. This is from the planning board, to see if the town will amend Article III Use Regulations 3.3, Use Classifications and Standards, Section 3.363, Marijuana Uses, to add a number of marijuana-related uses as described in the Regulations of the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission, to include the classification permitting requirements for these uses and to add or clarify associated standards and conditions, and to amend Article 12 definitions to add definitions for those marijuana uses. Chris?
I wanted to point out that you did receive one set of text in your packet, but then more recently, since we sent out the packet, that you've received two other texts. One is redlined, and it's dated the, let's see, March 21st, and it has GK as the initials after it, and that has red lines, and the other one is dated March 21st, and it also has GK for Jeff Kravitz, and it's a kind of a clean version. I think it might be helpful if you invited Mr. Kravitz, the Economic Development Director, to come forward and explain the changes that he has proposed, that he and I have discussed, and he's discussed them with the Internal Marijuana Working Group, as well as the Zoning Subcommittee, and I think we've reached some agreement on these changes, and that might help you to understand what this, what this text is all about.
Do you want, should we start with, do you want to start with Rob?
Yeah. So we told you that, we told you last year when we did the first recreational marijuana uses, that there would be more coming, and there is, and so we have this now. The state, the Cannabis Control Commission regulations have added a whole bunch of new uses, different kinds of recreational marijuana uses to the state law. And so we need to, if we want any of them to come to Amherst, or if we want to regulate them, if they do come to Amherst, we need to, we need to provide for that in the zoning bylaw. So that's what this article is attempting to do. It adds definitions to zoning bylaw that copy, or more or less copy, the state definitions for each of those uses, and then it adds all of those uses to the use chart, some of them in combination with each other. In other words, not all the uses have, not all the definitions have a separate use category. Some of them are combined because they're similar enough that we thought they could be combined. And then we also generalized the standards and conditions, so all of those will be added under the marijuana uses subsection of the use chart. And we have already established that the standards and conditions for the first three marijuana uses that we have apply to all marijuana uses. So we are now further generalizing those standards and conditions to apply to all marijuana establishments. That's going to be called the general category for marijuana uses. Previously, they referred to specific marijuana uses, you know, we called them RMRs and OMMDs or something like that, all these different acronyms. We're not calling, for the most part, just marijuana establishments. They apply to all of them. Last time, we wanted to, we tried not to make any substantive changes to standards and conditions, we wanted to just pass it along quickly. This time, we did think that it was appropriate to make some substantive changes. So there are going to be some things that we think no longer need to be regulated, or can be regulated in a different way. Hopefully Jeff will explain those better than I will. So I want to just go quickly through the article and show you what the sections are. The first section is the definitions. It's just, it's just a list of marijuana uses and the definitions as the state has defined. The second part is the additions to the use chart. The first three uses are already in there, Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, obviously Medical Marijuana Dispensary, and Recreational Marijuana Retailer. No changes to those. And then we combined two uses that the state has defined, craft marijuana cultivator and marijuana cultivator. We are, we think those are similar enough that they can be in the same use category, and we're basically proposing them as special permit use in all the business mixed-use And then there are several marijuana uses that are, that are not really general public uses, there would be private businesses, for the most part, just people who go in who do specialized work and come out, and they're not really open to the public. Independent marijuana testing laboratory, marijuana product manufacturer, or microbusiness, we combine those two uses, and marijuana research facility. That's, I'm skipping one. All of those, we copied the existing light manufacturing and research and development use categories, use permitting standards that are elsewhere in the use chart. We thought those were... We thought those were the kinds of things that would happen in an independent marijuana testing laboratory, marijuana research facility, product manufacturer, similar enough to those that, that the permitting standards could be the same, but we are putting them under the marijuana uses, not just assuming that they will be thrown into those category, into the existing categories, because we want the standards and conditions to apply to those two. Marijuana transporter, that's a very specialized use, that is something that can transport marijuana from one place to another, it's not a delivery service. Again, we, we're proposing special permit in, in the business zones. And then, there's two other use categories, social consumption operation or social consumption operator, and marijuana delivery retailer. Those are things that the state has decided to not allow yet, and so, we're not proposing them as, as yeses, they, they couldn't exist anyway. But we're putting them in the use chart, we're getting ahead of the game. The state will eventually figure out how to regulate those. So, we're going to, rather than be caught flat-footed at some future date, we have nos in there now, at some point, presumably, the planning board will want to change those. And the next section is standards and conditions. Again, for the most part, this is, is the same, but we're, we, we did do some revising this, so that it's more general, and, and, and we culled some of the things that, that aren't really necessary anymore. So, so we're, we are, we are hoping that, that you will support this. But we're also, because we don't have final language, we actually made some revisions to this article that, that you have right now, just a few hours ago. So, you don't have final language, and we're going to ask at the end of, of this discussion that you continue the hearing to April 4th, just like the other one, so that you can have, have final language.
Jeff, would you like to come for it?
Jeff Kravitz, Economic Development Director for the town. Mr. Kravitz gave a great overview. I'm not, I, I don't think there's substantive things that I could talk about in the definitions or the use chart, except to note one thing, which is, after the zoning subcommittee meeting and prior to this meeting, I did get an email about an inquiry for an outdoor marijuana grow operation on farmland. So, there had been discussion about whether or not to allow cultivation in the RL and RLD, it's not in this draft, but we did, I think, at least take care of the outdoor issue. So, I'm going to talk about a few of the substantive changes to the standards and conditions, just to make sure you're aware of them. In section 3, we added a new subsection, 3A3, just noting that a violation of the host community agreement would also potentially result in a revocation of a special permit or site plan review approval. I mentioned the outdoor, it was previously limited in 3B1, because it said must take place at a fixed location within a fully enclosed building. The state has a definition of an enclosed area, which allows outdoor uses if it's fenced and locked, and they have strict security regulations, so we're going to use that. B3, there was a limitation of 25,000 square feet, and we felt that that wasn't necessary anymore, and it would be likely limited somewhat by lot sizes and, and other zoning, as well as, you know, potentially being cost prohibitive in Amherst. In section B4, there was, so, the area accessible to the public in medical dispensaries and recreational marijuana retailers was limited to 2,500 square feet, and there was an exception made if it's in a building with palliative care, medical offices. Didn't seem to make sense anymore, that, that it could be bigger in those buildings than, than otherwise. We, one of the revisions you'll see next time, I think, is, we're just going to simplify, instead of everywhere you see Special Permit Granting Authority or Permit Granting Board, we're just going to replace it with Permit Granting Authority. In 3C3, on page 8, the marijuana establishment was required to come in January, by January 31st of each year. The state licenses renew on an annual basis of when they were granted, and so, we thought, rather than it potentially being significantly at a date, we would just say 30 days after the state license. And, oh, sorry, the, two other things. One is sort of a substantive thing that, that Town Council recommended, which is the very last thing, the limitation on recreational marijuana retailers. The language may allow a single retailer to have multiple locations and only count once, and, or could be interpreted to say that, so we're changing the language in here. We also have a separate article, there is a separate article that will be after that in case this, all these changes fail at town meeting, we can at least make that correction in the existing zoning. And then, I will go back to something that I skipped, and, which is the, where am I? Oh, page 8, Section E Prohibitions, and I'll defer to Mr. Stutzman. If I get this wrong, I'll try, try and, I think I know what we're doing. But, we, the zoning subcommittee discussed having two different things happen. One, the state regulations say that there will be a 500-foot buffer zone from any K-12 public or private school, and it's to be measured from lot line to lot line. So, we are going to mirror that language here, and then, we're going to have another buffer zone of 300 feet, similar to this, for any non-K-12 public or private school. Did I, did I mess that up? A, a place that children, where children commonly congregate in an organized, ongoing, formal basis that is not a K-12 public or private school, and we think that that language sufficiently covers everything else in that section, so we're no longer going to call out daycare, for example. Did I get that? That might be really confusing, so I will try to restate that. There are going to be two buffer zones, one for K-12 schools, 500-foot buffer from lot line to lot line, and then, another buffer measured 300 feet from the proposed marijuana use to a building containing children, a facility in which children commonly congregate in an organized, ongoing, formal basis that is not a K-12 school. I, I'm happy to answer questions, or...
Rob?
So, so the issue there, it was that the state has, has a specific buffer for schools and a specific way of measuring it, and ours doesn't match that, and so, there are potential conflict or confusion, and so, we wanted to be clear, rather than, rather than rewrite ours, we just decided to pull out the state's specific prohibition, specific buffer zone, and, and say that, and then, and then leave the rest that we have for ourselves.
Questions and comments from the board?
I have another comment about, about cultivating. So, so, the cultivating use, the cultivating use, we are not recommending at this point, allowing it in residential districts, not because we want to prevent farmers from doing it, actually, we think that would be fine for farmers to, to have, you know, a corner of their farm dedicated to cultivating marijuana, that, that would be fine, but, but we can't assume that it will, that only farmers will want to be cultivators. And allowing it in a residential district means that you might have a marijuana factory, basically, in, you know, next door. And, and so, we want to figure out some way of, of allowing that to, to happen in the right place and the right way. We did not, we're not going to be able to finish that before town meeting, so, so, at some future point, yes, we will try to make it possible for farmers to cultivate, but not right now.
Sorry, I should have brought this up at the subcommittee meeting. So, just as a quick answer for me, so, in downtown, a mixed-use building, like a big apartment building block, does that count as a building that you would need to be 300 feet away from a marijuana use establishment, if any part of that building had a place where children congregate? Is that how that works?
So, the buffer does not count for mixed-use buildings, so, no.
But she had the additional caveat of if it is a place where children congregate, so that could potentially trigger, if there's a daycare in the mixed-use building with residential apartments, that would trigger the buffer?
That would trigger the buffer?
As currently written.
Right? Yeah. But the daycare can move, which, it depends on which comes first, right? The daycare can come to the marijuana?
Yeah.
Yeah. Didn't sound right. I move to strike that from...
Chris?
I have three little ones, do you want them all in one, or each? All right, I'll, I'll do the three. They're not long, so, one of them was the, the 3B4, where it was the 2,500 square feet, which breaks down to like 50 by 50 feet, and just where that comes from, is that a state thing, or was that just like, oh, a 50 by 50 room, we don't want anything bigger than that? Just wondering what the sense was behind that. The second one is, under the prohibitions, 1A1, where, just why it says, you know, you, we have these buffers, but it says, except for facilities that are owned or leased by the same operator? Like, why do one operator, like, why do they get to have multiple? And the third question was, is Kendrick Place 500 feet from the high school? I don't know what distance was, I don't know if anyone actually looked at that, because that's a multi-use building, that's why I care.
You mean if Zipcar becomes...
Well, it's a multi-use building, which would allow it, but is that fall within a 500-foot buffer of the high school? Like, because we have 300, is it 500 now?
It's less than a block.
Yeah, I don't know, I could...
Corner to corner.
I have to go use the GIS and figure out. I didn't know if someone had actually looked at that. So, those are my three questions, so. The first was the size of the retail space, or the OM, OMMD, or the RMR, 2,500, why is that size?
Yes. So, I will answer the one I know the answer to, which is, the same operator is for co-located medical and recreational establishments, because I don't think that, I, I can't imagine the benefit of having two different of the same type, but we wanted to make sure that, because the state allows and actually encourages co-location, that we also allowed it, so that was that. The 2,500 square feet limit for, for public access, I believe was originally in the medical, and that predates me, so I don't know how that came in. And then, as far as the distance, I've not done 500-foot lot line to lot line measurements, so I don't know, I guess.
So, it looks like the, the question was the high school property to Kendrick Place property? The high school property actually seems to consist of two parcels, and the closer is the one containing the athletic fields, and if you were to go by that, then that parcel is within 500 feet property to property line to Kendrick Place parcel.
So, just back on the, for facilities that are owned or leased by the same operator, because some got struck and it just says marijuana establishment, so I was like, well, maybe the same owner would want, I don't, because we don't know where this is going to go. Is it, like, one is like a smoking coffee house, and the other is more like a store, and it's allowed because it's the same owner? I, I don't know, it just seemed like open wording.
Should we take questions from the public? Yeah? I'm sorry, David?
Some of the, I've got questions about some of the definitions. It seems as if some of these definitions were, might have been drafted prior to the revised, the final draft regulations, like, for instance, social consumption's just been sort of shelved for a while, and I wonder, or for another year or so, according to the commission. And I just wonder about why put in definitions that haven't been actually, actually finalized. And then, and along the same vein, I mean, one of the limitations that's added here, as far as I can recall, and I haven't done the deep dive into those regulations yet, so, I, I could be, I easily could be off, but like, the definition for the recreational marijuana retailer in Amherst would, would prohibit that retailer from being able to deliver, to be operated as a delivery service as well, which is itself been deferred by the commission as an issue, because they've put delivery to consumers on the, on hold for now, as I understand it. But this would prevent that, and I don't, and, and I'd like to understand why, what the thinking was behind that, to get ahead of the, ahead of the commission by being that much more restrictive in the kinds of opportunities that the retailer might have.
Rob?
So, I'll take that one first, I think, the, so, as you pointed out, right, right now, you, you're not going to be able to deliver, but at some point, you might be able to deliver, but that'll be a separate use, and so, you might have a co-located retailer deliverer, and you would have to get two permits. And I, I think we want to keep the definitions, even of the things that aren't going to be allowed for some period of time, because at some period of time, they, they will probably be allowed, and we just want to be ready for them. I think when they are allowed, we will probably want to change our definitions to conform to that, but we at least have a, a default now, and if, if, say, it's unlikely, but say the Cannabis Control Commission in July says, we figured out a way to make a delivery permissible, and it's going to be allowed as of November 1st. You know, you can apply for a permit on, on November 1st. That'll be before fall town meeting, we won't have a chance to, to get, get something in, in place, and this, this just provides a, a, a safe, a catch, a safety net for us. When... safe, a catch, a safety net for us. When, when the changes come, we will need to revise this again.
Public?
You. Hi. I'm Mark Jackson. I live at 1901 Drive, but I'm here as the high school principal. So, a couple preliminary things. So, last night Jeff came to this regional school committee meeting, and he gave us all civics lesson. And if I was a better student, I would have taken lots of notes, because I learned things about the ways municipal governments work that I had no knowledge of. So, I come here probably more humble today than I might have yesterday. I'm also mindful of the fact that, as a result of the lesson that I got yesterday, I feel inadequate to the moment because I'm speaking. I'm trying to make a case to people, and I don't speak your language, right? I don't do the language of bylaws and municipal constraints. And I'm also mindful of the fact that I'm speculating, right? We've never done this before. So, we all have movies playing in our minds about what this legislation will actually bring to our town and the lives of our communities. So, I'm trying to keep that in check a little bit. Now, to the point. So, I'm an educator, and so the fundamental question that I ask, the lens that I use, as I assess, as I assess adult life, is to what extent or in what ways do decisions made by adults for adults affect kids? And so, it's in that spirit that I come to you. So, I'd like to talk to you in that spirit about the movie that's playing in my mind, the speculation that I'm doing. And so, I think where I want to start, which is slightly different, in a slightly different place than where I started last night, is the fact that now I've, I've listened to two conversations about plot lines and building locations and distances. And one thing I want to say to you, and this is much, this is a kind of a spirit rather than letter comment, is to me, none of that matters. And I think in some ways, it's a distraction. What I want to say to you is that if we all step back and we assess kind of the cultural geography of our town, and specifically, I'm interested in where the high school is relative to the downtown, and what it is that kids tasting their, enjoying the first taste of their independence, that they almost instinctively do when the 220 bell rings. They all go downtown, right? And from the high school, from the middle school, it's a really quick joint, right? So, whether it's 300 feet, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, it doesn't matter, right? So, the point that I'm trying to make to you is that situating a commercial or retail establishment that somehow advertises, or regardless of how it advertises, is it's widely known that marijuana is retailing in that place. Adolescents, as I know, for adolescents, as I know them, that will be a siren song. We have 28 exterior doors on the first floor of the high school. You push a, you push a, you push a bar or turn, turn a latch or turn a handle and you're outside, right? So, if I understand adolescents, right, and the role that experimentation plays in identity formation, they are aware that there's this establishment downtown, and I can only speculate that that will attract lots of people. The activity will be intense. It will develop a culture of its own. It will, it will mirror what used to be referred to as come behind Rayos, right? As a place where people congregate, where things are transacted, where police routinely circle their way through. I'm imagining, I'm acknowledging that I'm speculating, but I can't help but think that that's what, that's what a commercial establishment, or retail establishment downtown selling marijuana will, will bring to pass. So, 28 exterior doors, adolescents tasting independence, experimenting with their identities. I can't help but think that, that will be this really intense draw. And ultimately, the question that I'm wrestling with, and I know I'm, I'm late to the game because the legislation has been approved, right? But the question that I'm wrestling with is how do we mitigate the fact that this has been approved? And I'm struggling with that, because if it is the fact that there's going to be a commercial establishment inevitably, invariably, that's going to be located in downtown Amherst, right, then we're really up against it. Because what we're saying is that the decisions that were made by adults for adults will, in fact, encourage a higher level experimentation, a higher level of engagement of adolescents with, with our narcotic. And I, and I, let me back up, because I don't know what word I'm supposed to use these days, right? Is it legal? Is it no longer legal? Right? But I begin, one of my assumptions is that forestalling first use of, of, of illegal substances is a good thing, right? There's research that demonstrates that. So, I'm trying to forestall that. But if, it is inevitable that, that this, the law has been passed and we're on to thinking about where to position this. At the end of the day, I don't think there's any place to position this downtown and still be faithful to our commitment to kids. Thanks for listening.
Hello, good evening. My name is Anastasia Ordones, and I'm the vice chair of the Amherst School Committee and a member of the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee. But I'm not here today to speak on behalf of the committee in any formal or official capacity, but I am here to raise some important questions about the proposed plan for zoning retail marijuana establishments primarily, and to urge the board to consider how your decisions will impact our students and the health of our youngest community members. I'm grateful to Mr. Jeff Kravitz, who, as Mr. Jackson just mentioned a moment ago, gave a detailed presentation to our regional school committee last night about the plans for implementing the recreational marijuana law that an overwhelming majority of our community members supported, voted for last year. Based on this presentation and conversations I've had with our superintendent, Dr. Mike Morris, and other research I've done, I would like to note the following. The district needs more clarity on the notification process for planned dispensaries. At this point, the town has not clarified how far in advance. It must notify the district if a dispensary has applied for a permit to operate in the neighborhood near a school, nor has the town given any related information about commenting periods, protocols, et cetera. The district and the school committee want enough time to meet about and comment on proposed permits and to share information with the wider school communities, including parents and caregivers. Guaranteed that parents and educators and caregivers will most certainly be very concerned about the location of retail marijuana establishments, as Mr. Jackson just mentioned, is front of mind for a lot of people. And rightfully, they need to be informed and have a chance for input so that this board may consider how individual establishments may impact our students. Furthermore, we need clarification on, on the purpose of the proposed 3% contribution that will be collected. And I recognize that the planning board is not necessarily in charge of some of those details, but just for the record, again, this comes back to communication and conversation with our communities. We heard that this contribution will go to general impact, but we're unclear in what this means practically. It would be helpful if that information could be given to our school committees and our superintendent, and if we could be consulted on the intended purpose before any of this is codified, if that is actually the plan. Finally, I just wanted to mention or sort of reinforce what Mr. Jackson mentioned about the buffer. This is a conversation that we had quite a bit last night at our regional school committee. And again, I cannot speak for the committee in an official capacity, but speaking for myself, I think that, you know, I agree with Mr. Jackson and I agree with our superintendent who stated concerns about the 300-foot buffer. And if we're going to be moving to a 500-foot buffer, as you just mentioned earlier, that actually represents very little distance between the property line of the, the regional high school primarily and the multi-use building on Kendrick Place. But beyond that, I think that there are many different places where our, our students will congregate, and, you know, whether it's for sports activities or anything like that. And so, we just want to be very mindful of that. I also want to state that for the record, the intent of these comments is not to recriminalize marijuana use. We want to be very careful, I want to be very careful about that, and, not to depict its responsible use by adults as anything more than a recreational or medically based choice. That said, we have a responsibility to our students and our families and educators to ensure that big decisions, like where to place the establishments and how their revenue or taxes from their revenue will be used, are made in a way that regularly and purposefully solicits its input from our communities. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? See, none. Back to the board. Bob or Greg?
I just want to reiterate that. We have, we are proposing changing the buffer for schools, for the public schools, increasing it to, to what the state is currently mandating as a minimum buffer. So, it is an increase. It's not just an increase in, in the number from 300 to 500, but also an increase because it, it, it's a different way of measuring. It's a, it's a more restrictive way of measuring it. So.
I apologize that I did mention this last night, but we did get advice from town council, and their interpretation of the regulations is that we actually can't increase the size of the buffer beyond 500 feet. That is a maximum because it permits municipalities to lower the number, but is silent as to increasing it. And so, their current, town council's current interpretation is that, you know, even if this board thought that 1,000-feet lot line to lot line would be a good idea, that may not be legal. So.
Well, I want to encourage the planning board to look at the regulations. Get, get your questions ready, because we're, because, you know, we are still, zoning subcommittee is still absorbing it ourselves. So, you know, it's understandable that you haven't really absorbed it yet. And be ready to come back next time to, to continue the discussion. And so, unless anyone else wants to comment, I will move to continue this hearing until April, or April 4th.
I just want to add one, one quick comment in response to the representatives from the schools and school committee. This was pointed out by an attendee at the earlier zoning subcommittee meeting, but it is not now, nor is it planned to be legal for people under the age of 21 to purchase marijuana. So, I just want to point that out as well.
Okay. So, there's a motion in a second. I'll favor, raise your hand. Continue till equal 4.
Who seconded? Great. Thank you.
So, I'm going to propose, because we have some, thank you. We have some people that are waiting to appear, that we skip to the appearances? So, I'm going to, we're going to skip to item five, new business appearances. So, 5A appearance, Van Kane Noir, presentation and discussion on town meeting citizens petition warrant article to amend the official zoning map, RO to RLD.
My name's Van Kaneer, and thanks for this opportunity. I know it's late, but I appreciate the practice presenting, because I need that if I'm going to go in front of town meeting. So, thank you for being there. And I also appreciate the manner in which this board meets. It's different than some other boards, and I appreciate that. I will give some background, and then stop me if you're hearing more than you need to know. So, I think I'm the first person in this town to propose downzoning since the adoption of this board, of the Amherst master plan eight years ago. I find this amazing, given that the language on this issue in, in that plan. And I'll briefly, and I think it won't be more than about 30 seconds to read you the most relevant, general, and then a more specific thing. Under land use overview, this land use chapter, this is direct quote from the master plan, "represents the fundamental element of the town of Amherst's master plan. Policy decisions about the community's land use, including zoning code revisions, will directly impact all other elements of this plan. Several key ideas recur throughout this chapter, including the protection of Amherst's unique landscape through the preservation of significant natural scenic and agricultural lands, the importance of directing future growth towards existing built-up areas such as the downtown and village centers, improving the town's fiscal health through strategic land development, and the need to guide new development in a manner that respects the town's history and existing community character." A little bit later, "land preservation priorities," colon, "preservation of the community's unique rural landscapes, landscape is a key priority in Amherst." And then, briefly, another paragraph talks about specifically what this planning board, I think, was directed to do. "Revised growth management regulations, zoning subdivision regulations, health regulations, et cetera, to protect the environmental resources and scenic view sheds. The town should comprehensively review and revise its zoning and subdivision ordinances to ensure that growth management regulations are aligned with the growth needs and land preservation priorities. Regulations should seek to preserve the environmental and scenic value of Amherst's significant rural landscapes." So, I'm sure that's not, you've maybe heard that before. There's not much in the master plan, which I finally have a whole copy of, thanks to Stephen over there. I don't think there's a lot, I don't think I'm cherry picking to do, to tell you these things. It's sort of, throughout the master plan, these values of preserving scenic landscapes in the, in the outlying areas of town seem to be present. In pretty strong language, even, there's more that I could read, but I'll stop there. So, my petition article, I, I'm, I'm from one of these outlying areas, you know perfectly well, out on Market Hill Road. And so, I guess I'm the brave person to recommend downzoning the outlying areas. I actually think it should be true everywhere in town that's in an outlying area that's RO-zoned currently, because with RO-zoning, quite a dense, quite, quite a bit of density is allowed. And we became rudely aware of that recently when a proposed development at the Ruder Farm property was presented, where eight building lots, lots are proposed on less than eight acres of, sorry, seven building lots on less than eight acres of land. And I went to my neighbors and 22, 100% of the people I asked signed my letter asking this developer to downsize this to a more, to, to be more in character with the neighborhood. They have not backed down, and we continue to go to zoning board meetings about the flag lots to see if we can delay it. So, anyway, that's some of the history. Our area is, the reason my article is now going to be restricted to just our area, above 420 feet in elevation. That's the new language that you haven't probably seen yet, but there'll be a little carrot here, that in all areas of town, above 420 feet elevation. And the reason I'm proposing that change, which would limit this, and I have some maps to show you if you are interested, the, the reason being that town water would not reach these areas without a new water tower or a system of pumping stations. So, I'm happy to pass this around. But this is, I have three map, three maps here. This one just shows the areas in town that are above 420 feet. So, the Holyoke Range, obviously, down here, and the northeast corner, which is Market Hill, Flat Hills area. I have a blow up of this in another map. And off of East Level Road as well. So, just the northeast corner. There's one tiny spot here, but it's Orchard Hill. It's not RO-zoned. It's right near the water tower, the current water tower at UMass.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sorry, that's fine.
425 feet is determined by?
The height of the water tower. Our current water tower can supply a house at that elevation, but not higher.
And that's the water tower near, near the Wildwood Cemetery? Or no, where is?
It's, it's at the top of UMass. So, on East Pleasant Street, the big green, light green water tower there, near the residential Orchard Hill, UMass.
Isn't there another one sort of back in the woods, near there, near the Wildwood Cemetery?
I, I'm not aware of that.
I think there is. Yeah.
In any of? In any event, the, I consulted with Guilford Moore, so 420 seems to be, the house on Market Hill Road, the last one, is 330 Market Hill Road, that has town water, and that's, that property is right, right at that level. So, this is just briefly, the same map with zoning RO marked on it. So, once again, the only relevant area for my article would now be the northeast corner. I also wanted to demonstrate that what's allowed in RO zoning is quite dense, if you look down here at, off of Shade, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting the name of this development.
It's Orchard Valley.
Orchard Valley. So, that density of development is allowed in RO zoning, which seems inappropriate to me, based on the master plan and the outlying areas. We have a little bit of it up at High Point Drive, where there was a subdivision put in in the 60s, and it seemed to be generally considered a mistake, because now you're not allowed to do that anymore without providing town water and sewer. So, there, 27% of those septic systems have failed, according to the, in 2000, by 2005, I think, are the records I was looking at, from the Health Department. That doesn't mean they've failed forever, it just means they had to redo their septic systems, which happens periodically, but it's the, it's one of the highest failure rates in town, so it's one of the factors that the DPW takes into consideration for where to sewer next. The thing about sewer-ing, though, is that you can't sewer an area that has drilled wells, because the recharge then does not happen for the groundwater. You need to have septic systems, which take the water from your well and puts it right back in the ground, which helps recycle it. If you have a sewer system, you remove that water, and the water table goes down, and you have problems with wells. So, here is a close-up of the northeast corner, I'm happy to pass it around, I have a property list as well.
Is this property list, these are the 425 foot?
I have not checked to see.
But more or less.
I understand Mr. Kaneer has been working with the IT department, and so...
So, my list is...
Yeah, okay, it looks like my...
Three and a half pages, 195 properties, I think, about that. But if you subtract duplicate property owners, in town of Amherst land, it's down to about 150 impacted properties.
And did the...
Thank you.
Did the zoning subcommittee discuss?
We've been discussing.
Do you want to?
We are still discussing, we have...
Oh, you're still discussing?
Yeah, we haven't...
And really, the purpose of this is just an introduction?
Sure.
Okay. Yes?
That's a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, the public hearing was supposed to have been April 4th, but it's going to be postponed to April 11th because of a glitch in the legal ad publication.
So, questions, comments?
See these?
Christine?
Is there any statement or weigh-in from the DPW on this?
Mr. Kaneer has been speaking with the DPW about the technical aspects of what he's proposing, but I haven't heard anything from the DPW directly about this.
So, do we have, is there anything in the zoning bylaw that's based on town water, town sewer?
The subdivision regs require that, for a subdivision, you cannot have a subdivision that requires both a well and a septic system on the same property. However, the planning board has the authority to waive or modify any aspect of the subdivision regs. And people who have been on the board for a long time may remember a project up on Leverett Road that was proposed a long time ago, that was proposing wells and septic systems, and it didn't get approved because the developer chose to withdraw it.
And the, but you can't have a well in a, say that again, in the subdivision?
The subdivision regs say that you can't have a subdivision that requires both a well and a septic system on the same property. I believe that is a relatively new rule, because obviously High Point Drive was built with wells and septic systems on the same property.
But we don't, nowhere is there subdivision regulations, which is different than, you know, zones, basically, so there's no place in, we have no zone, we have the aquifer protection, but we don't have any zones that are based on, you know, sort of infrastructure like that. And so the assumption is always that that would be handled in a specific permit, so in other words, in the RO or the RLD zone, that someone would have to, basically, it's up to them to prove, or their negotiation with the town engineer or the Board of Health, that they'll meet, you know, the regulations of the town. Interesting. So, just, I only looked at this a little bit, but so the biggest difference is that RO requires 30,000 square foot lots, and RLD requires 80,000 square foot lots, which is huge. And so I don't think either of those qualify as dense, but 30,000 square feet is about 3/4 of an acre, and then 80,000 square feet is two acres. So, so basically, you go from 3/4 of an acre to two acres.
So, the building commissioner had made a suggestion, if Mr. Kaneer wanted to accept it, which I don't think he does, but I'm going to state it to you anyway. The building commissioner said that he's worked in towns where they have regulations such that for properties in the RO zoning district that are not connected to sewer or water, that they would comply with the RLD dimensional requirements. So, that way, you don't actually have to change the zoning map, you just change the dimensional requirements that these properties need to adhere to. And then if the properties change in the future, either because the town installs water or sewer in the roadway, or because the landowner extends the water or sewer to his property, then he would revert back to using the RO dimensional requirements. So, that's another way to approach this, if anybody wanted to pursue that.
And my response to that is it seems deceptive to me to have a zoning map that doesn't actually reflect what you can do on it. If I were buying property, and I saw RO zoning, and then the small print says you can't build unless you have town water and sewer, that's a pretty big deal. I don't see any reason not to have it state what the current situation is and have it changed back if there were enough, you know, obviously, this is not, I'm not determining something forever. Somebody else is going to come forward at some point, probably in the history of time, to say, let's change the zoning in this area back to, we've expanded and we need more land. My primary purpose is, or concern, is about the master plan, not about water and sewer. My article was more general, but I think it has a better chance of passing because of this extenuating circumstance.
So, I'm going to speak out of school, but the, maybe one of the reasons that we don't see many downzoning proposals is the concern about taking. So, generally, when you downzone, you're taking a value from a property. So, in the, and I really don't know, I mean, in other words, it's not always the case, so in other words, you could be creating value, but, so on the same hand, 125 property owners bought their properties, you know, expecting a certain stability in what they can and can't do, maybe some of them had banked it for, you know, subdivision, I don't know, I really don't know. And so essentially, you, the concept is that you're taking that value from, from them, and I, you know, I know that you've talked to 22 homeowners, but there's another 100 out there that may have a different opinion about this. But generally, we try to stay away from takings without there being some form of compensation. So, normally, the expectation is that if you're taking value, it's almost like an eminent domain, and I, I know I have a, we have a lawyer here, so I can't speak sort of legal talk, but in a way, you're taking value without compensation, so we, generally, proposals are weighed against that, and that's one reason that there's not that much downzone. Yep.
Hydrogeologist.
Yeah, there you go.
I was curious about, everybody has private wells in that area, what's the range in well yields, do you know, generally?
I have the list from the state of everything on record, and I looked at the average depth of those wells, which is 404 feet, which is fairly deep. My current one is 230 feet, so I think if you're lucky, it's less deep. There's some that go as far as 700 feet down. There's a neighbor close by who has 1 and 1/2 gallons a minute, and she's fracked and drilled many, many hundreds of feet. So, there's some problem getting water in the area. I don't think that's necessarily related to what I'm saying here, but there is a water issue. Even the hydrologist hired by the developer for this property, the Ruder, the Ruder Farm, stated that neighbors would probably not be impacted, but that the five new wells being drilled in that area could have impact on each other, so they recommended placement of those wells to be spaced in such a way that they wouldn't affect each other. And then just today, in research, I found out that when a well has very small gallons per minute, the cone of depression created by the sucking of water out of the, out of the earth is widened if you have less gallons per minute. So, so that's a factor, nobody can tell you it's going to be always okay, it just, you hope it is.
How did the homes do during the drought in 2016?
One neighbor, her, she has a dug well, so that's a different situation, and she went dry for four months in that summer, maybe that was the same summer. The house I grew up in, I was very curious, because on the state records, it says that the, in 1994, the well where I grew up was at 80 feet above the pump, and they, Proben Well Supply came to that house, we'd sold to somebody who's now my neighbor, and they had work done on their well, and it was 30 feet above the pump. So, there, 50 feet have been lost since 1994, for some reason. Now, we don't know, and the hydrologists did not go into that depth of research, they didn't address that question about a neighbor's well. So, I can't answer more than just tell you the things I'm finding out, which is very interesting.
But we're talking about two completely different parts of town, too, right? So, some of the proposed rezoning is in the Holyoke?
No, no, that's all not included.
It's the 425, but not the R?
It's above 420, but it's not RO-zoned.
Gotcha. So, we're only talking about wherever that map is, gotcha.
Yes, it includes East Leverett Road, way up from East Leverett Road, but mostly Market Hill Road, Flat Hills Road, High Point Drive, Juniper Lane, up in that area, right at the corner of Amherst.
How many, I guess we don't know how many non-conforming lots would be created, so like how many 30,000 square foot lots would now become non-conforming?
Probably the whole High Point Drive neighborhood would become non-conforming.
Yeah. So, that's another thing we try to not do, is to create a situation where you create a bunch of non-conforming properties, so, you know, that too...
I'm concerned about the unintended consequences, and that's what you're talking about, and I understand them. I don't understand them fully, and I want to know what indeed that means for someone who has, is in a house and wants to build a shed, can they do it in a non-conforming area?
After an 18-month demolition delay?
Yeah, right.
Just wanted to see if you're paying attention. It becomes more difficult.
Okay, yeah, but I want to know that information, it's, I'm gathering information, this is an extremely kind of quick learning process for me, and I'm not an expert, I admit that, and I would like your assistance. Of course, I'd love your support, I don't expect it. I also feel like town meeting could hear these arguments and weigh the pros and cons based on everything you say and everything. I've told Cindy Jones, we had some email communications, she was very concerned about my article. I offered to meet her, she didn't seem as concerned, once I said it was going to be above 420 feet. She said that'll only impacts about 150 acres of coals. So, I guess that's better than thousands, so whatever. So, all I want to know, I want to know is, I'm interested in information and may alter things more, or even withdraw the article, but I have quite a few neighbors who are, think there's an urgency about this. There was currently more than 50 acres of land for sale in our area, and the wording of the sale is quite clear. It says, "This is the best potential for development in Amherst in a very long time." So, I, we are not very happy about what's coming, perhaps, and, and I don't, this is not for me, I lose a building a lot if this gets passed, so, just so you know.
Interesting. Should we wait for the zoning subcommittee analysis?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're good?
Okay, thank you so much. And then we'll go to the next hearing, which is, thank you, so we're going to, I'm sorry, the next appearance, which is Henry Lappin, Chair of the Public Shade Committee, and for discussion of regarding downtown streetscape issues, and I see Alan Snow also.
Yeah, thank you for having us, giving us some time on the agenda. I'm Henry Lappin, I'm the Chair of the Shade Tree Committee, and a lot of what we do is plant trees and educate people about trees, but also, we're trying to be proactive and make sure that as development happens in town, there's space left for trees. So, that's why we're here today, is to figure out what the rules are in terms of how buildings get sited, how close to the road, and what can be done to ensure that there is enough space for trees. For example, the newest place going up, you know, on 1 East Pleasant Street, is that what it is? There's, you know, it's right up to the sidewalk, and there's no room for trees there. So, I want to understand the rules better, and how we can work together to ensure that there is space for trees.
I could just add, Alan Snow, tree warden, Town of Amherst. So, I do spend a fair amount of time throughout the days of my job, talking with homeowners and businesses, and downtown and in our village centers is, can be a difficult place for trees, for tree planting to take place. And it's one of the locations that we really want to encourage it, often in our more urbanized areas, so. It does appear that some of our current zoning does require, in these areas, buildings to be built right up to the, to the curb, essentially, the sidewalk. And it doesn't really encourage even tree planting on the side yards or in the back of the buildings. And I don't know how to go about, you know, improving the chances of trees in our planning and zoning. One of the thoughts I've had is trying to encourage more green infrastructure concepts in stormwater, so that we could get the double benefit of cooling stormwater in the summertime, slowing it down, filtering it before it goes into the stormwater system, into, you know, local streams and things. And if we could, you know, work to promote that type of use in these, you know, urban areas in town, that would be beneficial as well, so. But really, just here to continue the dialogue that we've had over the years with the planning board and with other departments in town and boards, to leave space for trees, essentially.
So, the zoning bylaw, it doesn't require building up, up to the sidewalk?
Does or doesn't?
It's not. It's, it's, it allows it up to the sidewalk, and then it's a maximum setback of 20 feet in the general business zone. So, I don't know how much space is needed for a tree. We, you know, one way of promoting tree planting or tree saving would be to change the minimum setback to 5 feet, or 10 feet maybe, but I, but I can't imagine that we would recommend going more than 10 feet, but I don't even know if that's enough. Because we, because, you know, a lot of the downtown, you know, for decades or centuries has been planted, has been built up to the sidewalk. So, that's the natural, that's the natural development pattern of that kind of area. And, and, and we also want, you know, we don't want, we have a maximum in the downtown, because we don't want buildings setback a lot, we want, we want them close to the street, because it makes the street interesting, it makes, it encourages people to use the street, I think. And so, so, but maybe there is a way... And so, so, but maybe there is a way to find a, you know, a middle ground that will allow for trees or greenery without losing the benefits of having it built close to the street.
You know, it's sort of a weird dilemma, because I was going to punt it to Public Works, but, but, you know, probably the most memorable part of Amherst is the block where Hastings and, and that has big wide sidewalks. So, I assume that their buildings are built right to the property edge. But then, the town has contributed, I don't know, 10-foot wide, you know, pretty wide sidewalks there with trees. So, when we get down towards East Pleasant, I actually don't remember what the site plan is for 1 East Pleasant under construction right now. But I assume it's a pretty narrow sidewalk there, so not enough.
I think there is going to be, there is a tree, there is going to be a tree between the sidewalk and the street.
One tree, or?
At least one tree, maybe more, I don't remember.
But so, the, you know, in my opinion, the ideal is that one block we were just talking, I was just talking about where, you know, there is a significant public space so that fresh site can have tables out, you know, et cetera. But the, so if that doesn't, you know, if that doesn't exist on the other parts of downtown, then asking the developers to give up five feet, you know, to the public realm is a reasonable idea, I think. As long as it's part of the continuum of the sidewalks. So, in other words, as long as it's not grass, you know, or some, you know, some, as long as it's still that kind of urban condition.
I know, I'm not really, I'm not really looking for answers tonight. I'm just trying to keep the discussion going.
We've been good at not giving answers.
And, you know, to keep, as projects come forward to you, you know, Spring Street, there's some projects coming up on Spring Street. Again, another location that's going to be really difficult to site trees. And Amherst College, the Lord Jeff did a nice job in the bumpouts there. You know, there's, there are things that can be done to put trees in locations. Hastings sidewalk there, you know, the bid building is going to have to put in ADA compliant, you know, ramp there.
Which one?
Oh, the bid building. Yeah. So, again, we're losing space in the sidewalk, and it's going to push trees out of the air.
Yes.
You know, and so, it's all these little, little things that happen. Complete Streets is another one that kind of doesn't really focus on, it focuses on transportation, it doesn't focus on trees. And trees are more of an ornamentation and most complete street things. So, that's another project around town that's going to compete with location for trees. And all these things come, you know, across various boards and committees in town at some point, so.
If I can, the block in front of Hastings, the spaces are really too small for trees, and that's why we've lost most of those trees.
Yeah.
And then, you start adding the wheelchair ramp for the bid building, and you start losing more. The other thing about Complete Streets, yeah, it's more, it's widening the pavement for good reasons, but there's only so much room. So, if buildings can be set back, even 10 feet would add to what's on the sidewalk.
Yep.
You know, so there would be space. Another alternative is to start narrowing, you know, North Pleasant Street is quite wide there. And, you know, so bumping out, taking away, takes away a parking space or two, but bumpouts like they did in the Lord Jeff would help put space in for trees. So, there are ways to do it, and I think we need to figure out a way to prioritize that and make sure that with future developments, the space is there.
Christine?
Have you gone to talk to the TAC, the Transportation Advisory Committee? Because they're working on their Complete Streets policy right now, and I understand Complete Streets. And, I mean, we're talking about what to do with private property, which gets tough because that has a value, not that trees don't have, but, you know, for developers. And it, you don't necessarily, the solution to have like a choppy, like, frontage line either. But going back to Complete Streets, it's about the public way from edge to edge. And trees are a huge part and greenways of Complete Streets. But the problem is there's so many competing interests. So, you have people wanting designated bike lanes, or you want wider sidewalks. I think even the Mass DOT now is promoting, they want five-foot sidewalks. So, like, if you look at the old sidewalks, they're more like three feet, right? It's cutting into where you had trees. But, you know, road diets, we hear of that, you know, where you narrow the lanes, which is part of a traffic calming thing. You know, that's where sometimes you get a little bit more land, and so what happens to it? Does it become a sidewalk? Does it become a bikeway, or, you know, that's where you should go? And, you know, however the formula is, the trees.
I have submitted information to them, and I've been in consultation with them, yes. But, you know, with developments, too, you know, if your, if your board has, you know, this flexibility between zero and 20 feet, then we can push for trees, at least for part of the area, you know. I don't know, it's a conversation, it's not, I don't have the answer either.
Christine?
And just one last thing, what would be helpful for you to provide to developers is the type of trees, because a lot of it is height. Like, we run into this with signs, too. You know, if you have a sidewalk and a seven-foot guy walking, or if you have people on bikes, you know, where to put the signs is a huge issue. Well, it's also the branches of trees. So, I don't know if we have a list of, like, friendlier trees that are, you know, where they need to be narrow or higher branches, or whatever. I don't know if you have that.
I don't, I don't think I have a list of, I mean, generally speaking, most of the text I've seen kind of talks about the right tree, right place, you know. Tree planting should reflect, you know, road clearance and needs for sidewalks. And it's in our, the clearance for planting next to sidewalks and things like that is in our zoning now, so.
We do have a landscape guidelines book, which I should probably bring to your attention. It doesn't specifically talk about small areas, like areas between a building and the street, but it does talk about trees that the town thinks are appropriate to plant in a public setting. So, I could provide that to you if you're interested.
What comes to mind for me is these tree box filters for urban areas. And I don't know if you're familiar with them or not, but it sounds like it'd probably be more of a DPW initiative because it kind of incorporates a catch basin along with the tree. And the tree benefits from the initial flush of the stormwater, which has all the contaminants, or basically, greater concentration of contaminants, as in the first flush. And these tree box filters are very good in capturing that. But that's something that would have a use, but that would require, I think, a bump out sort of situation. But I'm a big fan of those, but I haven't seen too many of them installed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. What's essential?
Essential?
Is there more of the zoning subcommittee report?
Yeah. I don't think I've reported to you yet that we had been working on a, an article that would allow for lots that don't conform as to frontage and lot area, to make those buildable. Based on your comments last time, we abandoned that article. We are not going to do that article this time, put it on the back burner. There was no way it was going to pass, so we weren't going to waste our time.
Thank you for that report. Yeah?
So, the main thing I would like to establish is how many of you are available to attend a meeting on April 11th? I've heard from some of you already. Mr. Stutzman, Mr. Crowner, April 11th at 7:00. And Ms. Chow, and Mr. Schreiber, and Parry, and Christine, and Mr. David?
Since all of this stuff occurred before my tenure, do, is my presence sort of important there?
Yeah, no, it's not, public hearing, you're it, so you're, you own it now.
April 11th from 7:00, I am available.
And Jack is not available.
I am if you need me, but I don't think you need me. Everybody else is going to be here, right?
We need you, Jack.
I'm here for one day that week, and that's that, that day, so.
7:00 is good, 7:00 is good. And you're all available for the 4th, because you already have that on your calendar.
I'm not available on the 4th, sorry.
Is anyone else not available for the 4th? Because we have these two continued public hearings. All right, good, thank you.
Can we adjourn? We have to sign, right?
I can adjourn, but you like to sign this.
Do we have to, can we do that after we adjourn, or?
Yes.
Can I just confirm something?
Yeah.
That both of the meetings, the 4th and the 11th, will be here, not the design building?
I'm not sure where the 11th will be. I have to find a room for the 11th. Oh, you have to find a room.
Yeah, I don't know, we'll do the design building after town.
So, just a clarification, so the public hearings will happen on the 11th or on the 4th?
On the 11th. The 4th, you have two continued public hearings. You have the demo delay, which you heard tonight, and the marijuana uses. There's also a scenic roads public hearing that did get advertised properly. So, those three hearings are April 4th. And then, April 11th, you have the two inclusionary zoning bylaws. You have the supplemental detached dwelling unit, and you have Mr. Kainer's article about RO to RLD.
So, with that, we'll postpone all of the, no ANRs?
ANRs.
We'll postpone the, all of the committee reports till next time. It's getting late. I wasn't the chair for, oh, good, you signed, yeah. So.
I have two sets of minutes. One for Mr. Schreiber, and one for Mr. Stutzman. This is for you. This is for Mr. Schreiber. You did, oh, I guess, well. Steve just pointed out that Mr. Stutzman was chair for both of those, and he wanted to just.
He signed both of them.
He did sign both of them.
Over, I can, I can do your signature really well.
So, Steve already signed the other ones.
Just sign over it.
Sign, sign up.
We'll both sign it.
Yeah. All right, so we'll see you guys on April 4th?